I'm gonna. Buenas tardes a todos, vamos a empezar en unos cuantos minutos.
Good evening everyone. We still have our phones working. We shut back in at six forty-five. We did check in legal counsel, we're not able to accommodate unless we have the arms and their checking system. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for meeting.
Okay, good evening everyone, welcome to the. And the citizens of the oversight committee. I'm calling the board seven oh two. To access translation two. Click the icon at the bottom of the screen. And if you're currently auditorium, the translation. Headset and that corner will be auditorium, he does this. In a few minutes, we're going to begin with all the comment agenda items. Numbers of the public are invited to speak so or none of them matter. But it's not otherwise on the agenda. It is in the subject and jurisdiction of West Contra Casa. Please prepare now. And fill in a and submit a WCC USP comment card. We have five hours available. And if your existing is soon to be raised from hand and the student. And they come participating by phone or phone. The comment brought on this interner in the comments that we have sent an order received. Can we call on speakers one at a time? All journey between a valid comment here and up here in this long ancient and then long long soon. But would comment generally last an hour and a time allotted to speakers two minutes. In the meantime, we're going to allow to address for our open procedure. So I'd like to welcome everybody and we can do some introductions. I'm Mr. Rettler, resident of the West Contra Casa District Board.
Good evening, I'm one, future associate, best lead for area four.
Hey, my name is Julia Smith Folt. I'm a West Contra new last edition board of VESKY area. So we could add an essential to the.
Good evening, Melissa Dean, interim associate superintendent of operation.
Anna Reba, CBOC member.
Bill House, CEO of CBOC.
My name is Brendan Naverdottan, citizen of the side committee, vice chair.
Rosa Green, second president.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Cotton, superintendent. I'd be glad to acknowledge especially asked in the states today. We have Lucio Fonte, city council person for Aziz and Hala.
Thank you. So we also have trust me online. Okay, next we're going to move to item three, which is a budgeting evidence. If you're willing and able, we're able, please relax when I have to place my slide.
It's on her laptop.
Well, we are ready to begin. Let me finish fill the flat. The United States of America, and the regardless of which stands. Moving now to there landing in our body now. We recognize that there is a key on the land, so the shooting room will contract into loading vehicles. And acknowledge them, so first to have this about that we currently have people with. Labor value that essentially. I acknowledge the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls down where you are. Platinum round of this in the building of this country and this institution. And remember that back when people were born and died, working in a slant against the old generations. They also acknowledge the ongoing contribution of labor survivors from the centuries to the day. Walking their neighbor into the voluntary involuntary traffic and force and other individuals. In the building of the government of the United States. They cannot understand me on Zoom.
Okay.
Kim will come here and then we'll check that.
The other thing is you want to point the speak straight in. Is that better? That's how you use a mic.
Number five, West Contra, we have a single district store and a next. And it was not just consulting top ward in education. It is committed to work and racism, conscious and active. We're not just an act of efforts to identify damage and correct racial inequities and systems and institutions through that our schools can't continue. Racism explicitly includes the status and direct conflict to fundamental principles of WCC USC education. To carry WCC education into the future and recognize that we must continually review and reflect on roots of racism and grow new ideas to new times. Undressed ideas and policies and racial negativity we produce have shaped us, our schools and our society. We strive to uncover our unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and support members. We challenge ourselves to resist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning. To deepen our listening and learn sanitation of racism and aggression. And to develop strong understanding of our personal experiences and feelings to mark your picture of continual aggression. Each member of our school board individually and politically is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist parenting narrative. Where the school staff member and community partner is respected and valued member of the WCC USC community. Our uniquely positioned is in this our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and unethical policies themselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting the anti-racist policies and programs practices for our children's education and upbringing. While the next term in U S expand communities. We commit to, uh, we commit to holding each member accountable towards these goals. And moving the work of anti-racism over. We also commit to holding less complicated the house for districts staff, states and community to meet the standards of anti-racism and anti schools. Order approved March twenty of twenty twenty-four. Six, roll call. Are we looking to proceed?
Uh, we're just figuring out how to make sure we get the screen and the audio working.
Let's see the bowls.
Present.
Let's see, the salad boy.
Present.
Online is. Uh, trustee Hernandez is not present, and we're present right hook.
I'm present, thank you.
We also have a senior justice meeting.
If I can't hear you, I'm pretty sure the people back there can't hear you. Maybe people speak up a little bit.
Brendan Naverdottan, uh, present.
Anna Reba, present.
Ashley Johnson, present.
Larry Johnson, present.
Moving on to seven, agenda review of adoption. Is there anything that either body would like to adjust for? Seeing them will proceed with. The agenda as presented. Moving out to eight, other comments. Numbers of the public are invited to take to the board of any man that is not authorized on the agenda. This is in the city private jurisdiction of West Contra Casa, you can pass a little return. All coming last past twenty-one hour, the time allotted to speakers is two minutes. Additional speakers remaining at the conclusion of one hour, both comment may be accepted. The title of the procedure beyond the first hour is generally one minute. Individuals wishing to see the certain WCC USC public comment card were participating by Zoom. Individuals in race and we have the same now prior to the beginning of the site on the agenda. If you are calling in by phone, press star nine. Speaking time should not be transferred from one person to another and there is no substitution of speakers. Speakers can also be public comments again for each discussion and action item on the agenda after stand presentations. The public will have panelists or items involved in the first speaker, this can be called the culture so that the volume climb. The public comment period is safe space for diversity points made discussed similarly without interruption before continuation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time at the podium as if it were your own. Be open to a different kind of view if what is offered. Use the brown hat for members to not discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comments. Is there an open comment?
Yes, we have three.
Yes, there are three items. Estina Veronia.
Did they start the timer? Alright. Hi, my name is Estina Veronia. Um, I teach fourth and the third here at Lake. Welcome to Lake, yay. We have new facilities, they're fantastic. I'm very grateful for them. I would like to remind you though that there are over twenty schools in this district that still do not have air conditioning or adequate airflow in their classrooms. So teachers are really experiencing terrible working conditions, especially hot months as well as horrible. Learning conditions for their students, so yay for us, that's fantastic. And let's not forget that we really need to revisit the proposal that we made in our contract about a temperature maximum. Um, something I did want to touch on really quick. Um, I'm not really appreciating the messaging going out on parent square right now. Um, there have been some things said about students being harmed if teachers were to go on strike. Insinuating the teachers are the ones doing this harm to the students. The teachers are not the ones doing the harm to the students. We care for the students every single day. I am on the negotiating, the bargaining team. I've been in every single meeting for nine months with the district trying to make this happen. We need to come to a solution to an agreement. That is your choice, you can make an end to that. If you do not want us to go on strike, please make an agreement with us, come to terms. Pay the teachers better, give us the classroom size that we need, the temperatures. Come on. Thank you. Do you opinion? Yeah.
What we're doing, running to Canada, they're teaching at Lake for twenty-seven years. All of it. We've also been here. So when I look, we love our beautiful new building, but when I look at the way old political stood. We were talking about this last week, we were happy there. We have been doing the same teaching, the same load of students. It reached all the fact that we are and always were the heart and soul of our school. It's not the building, it's the students, the teachers, the support staff and our beautiful community of families. I've had Patricia Conte's kids and we have her brave kids. I had someone who's, uh, suddenly had, you know, you call it mom. That's what community is. The WCC USC's vision statement and Lake's vision statement both include striving for high standards. Creating lifelong learners and putting students first. So our school board members and teachers have the same three goals. Putting students first means investing in the people who teach and support them every day. As we celebrate our beautiful new school, we must also fight what happens inside. We need smaller class sizes, special education support and fair pay that makes teacher stability. Our stability, stability leads to brighter teachers. Students first is our commitment, let's honor it. Thank you.
Mark, you're still. Alright, Mark.
Good evening, President Rettler, trustees, Superintendent Cotton. Uh, I want to echo gratitude. Um, I refer to the teachers about this facility. It's truly life changing for the students that learn here and for our members that work here. So many worries and concerns about physical conditions and hazards, temperatures have been taken off their shoulders. So they can focus a hundred percent on providing quality instruction to their students. We need this for every school site in West Contra Casa, not just the ones that were higher along the list. There are twenty schools in our district, mostly in the cities of Richmond and the city of San Pablo. Do not have air conditioning or adequate air ventilation for our students. This causes many, many days, upwards of twenty days a year where students can't learn. They can't stay in their classrooms, they're taken downstairs, told to lay on the grounds, get cooler. Um, this is not a sustainable situation yet. We've had no sense of urgency from our district administration today. And this of course predates Superintendent Cotton, so this is not, not on her watch. Um, but it is something we need to work towards. We have a proposal in our union negotiations that we agreed to a temperature range that is acceptable. It's within the law, the law has changed and now you can't have indoor temperatures over a certain level. Um, because it violates the law. But we've had no willingness for the maintenance and operation executives to engage meaningfully about how we're going to address this. We have many ways to do this. We have many cities and the county government, um, and other private, uh, funders where we could look to resources to provide relief to our students. The other thing I want to say is Lake is successful because it works with number, a number of international educators. And they're in a precarious situation right now. They want security. They scale I part of the non-exhibition inside without international educators. They deserve a path to legal permanent residency and have something within your hands. Superintendent Cotton, President Rettler, let's work together to make this a stable, safe place for our non-immigrant educators. Thank you.
And that concludes public comments. Thank you to everybody who gave public comments. Okay, so number one, the safety word has already been completed. We did that before starting the meeting because we did not want. And then we'll move on to B two, which is the session of annual report. In accordance with California Education Code one five two eight zero B, the citizens fund restricted the bills of admission. They're preparing a policy and annual reports to ensure liability accountability and transparency. This report reviews and requires on progress and the sure bond funds ensuring that money is spent on authorized projects. In accordance to voter intent, the CEO of CBOC will update the board on its progress in completing the twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four annual reports.
Again, I mean, Brendan Naverdottan, uh, CEO of CBOC, you're a happy chair. So, um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the history, uh, recent, last few years, get rid of the CBOC in our membership. And how that has challenged us to, um, uh, produce reports. Um, in accordance with the, the law that President Rettler decided. So, um, we're on this side of the table, we're all volunteers. Um, and if anybody's interested in joining our, our group, uh, there are warm seats waiting for you. Um, let us know. And so anyway, you know, there was a period of time where the, uh, the CEO of CBOC was, um, understaffed, if you will, or the, the, um, the number of members didn't meet, uh, the requirement by law. And so we've been digging out a hole in terms of, uh, eating up, uh, our, our volunteers and membership of the CEO of CBOC. Um, there was also a period of time where the CEO of CBOC was not operating. Um, I'm not sure how long that was, um, about a year at least. Um, and so because of that, we, uh, we fell a lot behind on these reports. For just general, uh, you know, understanding of, of the requirement. Uh, this body oversees the bond expenditures of the district. And, uh, we issue a report every year that says, yes, the district is in compliance with the language uh, stated on the ballot that passed the bond, uh, with the voters passed bond. Um, I will, I will say, you know, one thing about, um, our work and, um, you know, the, some of the bond language, at least more recent bond language is, is so raw that the only real, uh, thing that, uh, we'll be looking and we'll be looking at where the district may have compliances is not in, in which school they invest in, uh, or what types of things they invest in. But really, are the, are the, are the dollars going to the capital program? Or are they going to the operational side of running school district, command teachers? And obviously the bond program doesn't fund that. Um, so, um, I just wanted to offer those, that, that background a little bit. Um, and you know, the commitment that we will get, get ahead of this and finally produce these reports. Uh, and we'll do that with the support, uh, and empowerment that we, that we get from our partners that, uh, on the school. Anybody else have a comment?
Beautiful, beautiful side, Brendan, I couldn't have said it better myself. I couldn't have said that better myself, Brendan, thank you so much.
So I have some ideas for you. First is can you maybe collapse twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and just say we weren't there? The committee was disrupted, we didn't have numbers and seal those up and then just concentrate on twenty-four.
I was actually going. Actually very much agree with that. Um, and I was going to email and request that. But as I was speaking, it was done. Before the departure, um, it was said that because we were not here, we can't produce those CBOC reports. I thought that Lorraine was working on one from a previous year and I have not been able to acquire that from her. So it only makes sense for us to think of any work where we are now.
And if I can add, one of the things that we can do staff is we can pull the required bond financial and performance audits for each of those years as well as a fiscal year financial reports. And I can just put those in packets and provide them so that each one of those physical years is kind of wrapped with those materials. You know, for inclusion and.
And then there's something else I want to say, but it's just a reminder. Oh yeah, is there anything that, that you can do? You need resources besides your time and brainpower? Um, are there, um? Are there trainings, books on how you get done, examples from other school districts, like anything that the staff can help you with?
So I will mention that I'm adding all my steps today. The acting chair has asked for some training. And so one of the things that we can do in providing that administrative support is pull some different examples and kind of help identify the components to be included.
Awesome. So training will be great. I also think that we need some time to generate a discussion on how we want to tackle this. I think it's a great suggestion to, to collapse and combine these reports given that none of us were on the board for three of those years. I think I joined in '23. So, so thank you for the suggestions. Also, maybe some time with legal counsel. I don't have formulated questions yet, but I do think we would benefit from being able to ask some questions to district legal counsel. That would be great if they come to one of our meetings. And then, and then just, just, you know, high love for, for our group. You know, in the past, these reports have been so dense and so, you know, well-written. But there are also, you know, the point is to get the message about how the district is spending money out to the community. And, you know, if I get to show a hand of anybody in the room who's read one of these reports, they're one, two, three, on this side of the room. Yeah, the point is to get that information out. We need to think about how, how we, to make it more relevant, right? And, you know, even, even as far as, you know, going beyond, we're doing something in addition to a deeper report. We can look, looking at technology, looking at social media, looking at ways to get the, the message out. Because that's the point of it, right? We can, we can do a one big report that says the district is in compliance. You know, here are some, here are some things that we think could be, could strengthen the bond program. But then, you know, at the end of the day, what we really need to do is figure out how to get the message out to the community and do it in a different variety of ways. So we can talk about that in our meetings.
Well, one thing that we did talk about, and I think you led this, was, was dividing up. So that we, we, each individual C D O C member has some set of aspects of what we need to tackle, take wrong. And effectively, kind of being a subcommittee, we all buy into that. And we did, I think we did that. Have checked them recently on that. But certainly, I'd be happy to be my part in everything else. And I think to your President Reckler's question, I guess, I don't think there's anyone here who wouldn't take assistance from, you know, some kind of. I know, I know there's, you know, staffing is an issue with this, but we certainly would be, would, I think, well, to have dedicated or part-time dedicated some district staff who might kind of facilitate and manage some work and provide resources when needed. I think that would be welcome. And, yeah, I think we all want to get this done and we're, we're past that. And I think part of the problem has been, you know, like for me, relatively new, you don't have the history with, with the district or the board. Had never been involved in offering an annual report before for our C D O C. But I know there are resource staff in rural districts. It's easy to find things online, AI is helpful. So I think we're committed to get.
Absolutely. The update on us giving up all of the chapters, that has to be revised. So we can go move forward with our chapter, even now we know what you're committing. And we'll just take the other work into this, adding a section of our votes. Or give it to the new chair, because that's what I was pulling, putting the glossary together and, and this, and, you know, pictures, all of those things. So now I'll take all of those and just kind of go by the muffin. It's, it's helpful knowing you're the vote department. I mean, appreciate that.
I just wanted to say that, I think that one of the most important things is training. Because we don't just want to turn anything in, we want to make sure that what we turn is accurate. And it does speak to where those ones are going and how they're being sent. And that we are showing the communities that it is being put in its power place. And so I echo what all of the members have said over until C D O C. And that we're committed to getting it done. But kind of having that guy and being able to navigate the way the student can get successfully completed. And because where we're going over time like that.
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you all for volunteering your time. I know it's not easy work, especially, you know, getting started. I really liked President Cynthia doing some sort of executive summary. My experience has been, probably the previous years, like it can be pretty overwhelming to do reports. Writing 100 things that are wrong and 100 things that are right. And it's difficult for, I think, for us to work than they are priorities that we want staff to focus on. My experience has been staff go on, fix everything, which then also doesn't allow us to have kind of ability, right? We're not thinking about the top three things that this should be really focusing on. So I think it's really, I mean, of course, we have to fix all of them. I mean, it starts with, do it legally, yeah, good. But I think that would be helpful. And I think each year, it would also be helpful for me to hear like the top three things that C D O C needs from the district to do to do a job better. Sometimes I think in the past, it's been also a laundry list of things, right? I think every group in the district has a lot of needs, right? Because we're on their staff, because we don't have the resources that other districts have. But I think it's really important that you all are able to do your job, right? Training, I think it's an easy thing to, it's easy to fix. So something like hours for legal counsel, right? I don't think you can survive, you know, unlimited hours for legal counsel. But I think having, you know, the chair and the president figure out, like, hey, like, you know, twice this semester, we're like, I'm meeting with legal counsel, where's our all, but I think those things are cool, right? We should be able to have, I think it's important for me, just a short list of things. This is the things that we need for this year in order to pursue sheet this, right? So that would be my ask. But I really do, we want to see it, Henry.
I think one of the things that we need to make sure is there's a difference between compliance and culture. You want to change the culture of the C D O C, you do that by coming to the board meetings for scanning reports. You do that by advertising all the beautiful, you know, flyers, the newsletters that come out. That C D O C does newsletters about, your newsletter about Lake and speed. And so those are the kind of things that you can do. But compliance is very important. What we legally have to do to use C D O C to maintain your C D O C status to then implement the vision and initiative of the C D O C is. I think because everybody goes to believe in working that compliance part, and then culture will come. That's a lot of the district can come in and tell this changing and shaping the culture of the C D O C on complete.
Well, we'll go to public comments. Do you have some closing comments for us? Is there any public comment?
Thank you. There are a couple of comments here that were not quite accurate. Over a number of years from C D O C to the meeting, that's not accurate at all. I went back and checked the register. I have them right here. In 2021, there was one meeting that was missed. In '22, there, there was three meetings that were missed. In '23, there were four meetings that were canceled for lack of a forum. In '24, there were two meetings that canceled for lack of forum. And then one meeting just didn't happen. So you only talked about five meetings over the past four years. So that's not really an issue. There wasn't time, I mean, there was resolution passed by the C D O C. Saying we're not getting the support that all we needed. And so they said, we're not commuting. And that was not included in the past five years. And as far as the annual reports right now, there's only two annual reports that are outstanding. One with the team's former chair, that worked on issues and, you know, in more help. So hopefully, there's just a few days ago about that. There's, there's a, and one is thing that worked on right now. But other than that, they didn't turn in. I think it's shared with you. That's not up to us to do that. Your staff is supposed to be doing that. Communication department is supposed to be doing that. But for whatever reason, they don't, they aren't made it to get a part of the year. But they're not as far behind as you're running it out to me there.
Is there any more, any other public comment?
Hello, great, Anya. This is my first time at Emily's meeting, but I'm just curious. Is there a website where I can find out more information about specific things, the role you guys do? It sounds like it's very important or something.
Yeah, she's helping get ideas for her project. She'll, you know, so maybe from your side, you guys find out something about it. Thank you. Did you want to say those about the language?
The one comment I'd like to make is, first, I'd like to thank you very much for your service. People who've been around for a little bit know, I'll say that for those who are new, I think you have the most difficult volunteer job than all the volunteer jobs. It takes a while to get it. But you were all, I know you can do it. And I know you can do absolutely great reports. And I have full confidence. And it's just what do you need to get that done? I've seen some examples of really good reports that are about a page. And if you're shaking your head, so it's not like you.
Hey guys, well, yeah, they're great.
And I can very soon to show you, but if they're important, it doesn't, they're like, wow. They've, you can really see what they're doing. And it's very complex. So I'll be, that's getting it screwed so that, you know.
I just wanted to answer that question, where you can find information. I had a volunteer, these are the boards and committees, it would actually be on our W C C U S D page. And then there's an entire tab for boards and committees that maybe you could, you know, in the U S D. It's currently being worked on, it's been updated, but it should be completed. But that's where you'll find more information.
And if there's nothing else, we'll close out B2 and lead to B3, which is the C D O C website, and we'll pass it over.
Do you want to take this one? Okay, so thank you for the comment about the website. You did that for next time here. You know, our, and I'll, I'll say in a moment just to say, you know, the role of our committee is, as I said before, but just to be super clear is to ensure that the, the district is spending the bond revenues that are tax-dollars from, from the residents of, of the districts on the appropriate things that, that the bond language stated. And so, and then one of our very important roles is to make sure that that message of how bond revenue can run and where the money's going, and maybe why some of the schools got chosen and some didn't. You know, all that sort of information is available for the public and for our community members. The, the website is an obvious place to get that information out. So the functionality of the website is super important and critical. The user friendliness, the timeliness, the ability to navigate through the website and the resources we're on are all very important. So we have had this discussion in prior years. I think the last joint meeting, one of the last joint meetings last year, we had the communications director. So we've had great partnership and support in this space. I think we're eager to help provide content and also potentially some, not design direction, but some wish list items around how we, we would like our website to show up. So, you know, that's, we're going to open up the discussion in that regard. I, I'd also like to understand where we're at with the first state of development or revised of the website. I know it's in a greater context of the whole district website revised. And then maybe we can talk a little bit about the process of what, what the district needs from us, what staff needs from us, and what we can expect when we provide advice and that for posting on the website. There has been a lot of stuff, there has been a lot of resources posted on the website. I think we'll, we'll also need to talk about, from, you know, from our perspective on what's critical and how to present things so it's easier to navigate. Because a lot of information is always not the best way to just, if it's a dumping ground, it's not, it's not always effective for, for people to get what they need. So, yeah, that's just my opening comments. Anybody?
All right, I was just looking at the website. I just Googled W W C C U S D, C D O C. And we didn't know, because right now it says contact Tom does when you get any questions. Well, she's probably happy to answer, but he's not chairing longer, unfortunately. So, you know, I think this is an area where maybe we could work with the district staff, someone assigned to talk a bit on the website. I guess there's some immediate updates that need to be done. But also, you know, I think more than most important things to be on there is some of these reports. Hopefully we'll have them come up later on or soon. And I think, you know, it'd be good to probably regularly or at least quarterly or annually to meet with, with staff to talk about, you know, making sure the website is up to date. It's got accurate information, and it's, you know, manageable and has at least the basic program information as a people working on.
So I'll share quickly that our director, Pam, is not with us tonight. She sends her apologies. She looks forward to continuing to partner with the C D O C. And we have with us here tonight, Yezu, one of the team members from Pam, Snessa, who's listening in. And is definitely going to be a partner and hoping to update the website. So we want to thank her for being here today. And I know she'll be sure to report back to Ms. Forrest. Should I pass it to the board?
Of course, I'd love to hear from instead of an update. I do have to say that apart from maybe just like that nice facilities, or any of those questions, I get this award whenever I go hang out. And bonds are one of the biggest things people have figured out because they see the property go up, right? And they're really interested in what they're paying for. So I always send them the website, which I'm not really writing out much to look at. So I would be super interested to hear mine for the development and hear thoughts of what should go by. For us to honestly examine our community for resources, right? Because I spend quite a lot of time informing community on what we're doing. And I think that is very, very helpful. So I would love to hear that.
And I have a question. It's probably from a sensitive, in preparation for this meeting, I was going to say, and there were, there are cases of. So, in preparation, this meeting, I was excited, there were many broken links for annual reports and agendas and many things are broken. Would you be able to give us something on what's transpiring with that website?
Yes, thank you, President Reckler, Superintendent Cotton, C D O C, and Board of Education. Hello. So at this time, yes, I will say that there was some significant. So at this time, yes, I will say that there was some significant issues with the migration over from the old Blackboard site to this new site, final site. Um, but we are working to resolve those issues and, um, we are set for a launch of a new C B O C website coming on December fourth or fifth this year. And yes, there are several steps that need to happen before we can launch it in its full, uh, capacity. But at this point, we are, uh, migrating files over and trying to make sure that we have what we need. And then we would like to work very closely with C B O C to, um, update content on pages, re-link links that have been broken and lost, and make sure that everything is in workable condition once that happens. So a person, someone who is a representative of C B O C can work very closely with the communications department. Um, I have a process outlined for how that can actually happen. So I also have on this call, I can share a mock-up of the actual page, the front page, and give you an overview of how it can be used. And, um, if that's something you'd like to see.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let me share my screen. Let me know when you see my screen, because I can't tell exactly. Okay, hold on. All right, I see. One moment. Okay. Okay, this is a mock-up of the C B O C website and how it will look actually when it is launched, although we do need approvals. Um, so I would like to work with someone in advance to make sure that we have approval of this mock-up done. Um, along with the Director of Communications, who is not here today. But I can just give you a quick, like, spin through of what, how this site functions and how it can work really well. Um, it's very much in line with how it exists now on the C B O C website in terms of navigation. You have About, Meetings, Reports, Training, Library, and Calendar. And some additional features that are on this site that, uh, are on the district site and all the school sites as well is the ability to locate schools up here in the corner and a Find It Fast, which is very much improved over the old Blackboard site. Find It Fast, uh, quick, fast, quick search, um, when you're looking for items. So as we scroll down, these are some of the major points that you have traffic, uh, from people in the community, uh, meetings, agenda packets, reports, library and minutes, and meeting recordings here on YouTube. So this will cling through, click through to YouTube. So these are your major buckets, and these are easy access along with your navigation up here at the top. Just want to point out also that this translation here is something that is really easy to access. There, I can't show you right now, but there are fifteen or more translations, translations that can be done. Um, these are the major translations that were given to me, um, through the depart, or sorry, through the um, K through twelve and Educational Services Department of the, the languages spoken in the department that are listed here for people to translate throughout our community. If you scroll down, we also have an ability to put news out here on your own C B O C feed. Um, we do have a Parents Square link here. This can be removed, or, uh, I know that C B O C probably, I'm not sure how involved you are with Parents Square, but socials are also here as well as an opportunity. We can just, um, remove those if it's only news that you would like, and you can also have your items posted here, like meetings and different things. Um, we can have a conversation about how you'd like to present in your news section. So down here at the bottom, um, we also have, uh, in contact information. These, this is also the social information and quick links. We want to keep these under eight, eight links per se, but these are also links that can lead to different parts of your site that can help you out a great deal. This is the first page. This is the homepage. To go deeper into the site right now wouldn't, um, wouldn't really help us. But, uh, if you would like to give us feedback on this, my suggestion is, is that you create a Google Doc and share it with the communications department and list items that we can work on to help improve and collaborate, collaborate with you on. Uh, that's how I've been moving forward with other department and school sites, and so I think that would really help here. Something to let you know that I've done is I've taken, I've created actually a Google, a Google document that has every single page in the current C B O C website, and I've migrated all of the information from those pages onto the Google site. So all of the messaging and links that are on the current site are on that document, and we can work directly on that document to make changes. There are many links that are old, outdated, broken, that need to be fixed. And I do need the help of C B O C, as C B O C liaise on, to work with me to reconnect some of those links. Um, yeah, do you have questions for me? I see hands.
Uh, Sinestic, thank you so much for, for the presentation. It looks good, and I welcome, uh, the opportunity to engage. I think we have some members on our committee that are very excited about this, this topic and, um, asked as well, so we'll, we'll definitely be in touch. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. Sixteen years ago, as long as the second, the first C U S website, unfortunately, it was not handled through the district because through the S D I, the construction projects, and then the district kind of booted in an outpatient group, but that all went home. So we could be lost, our website that we had at the time. But in my opinion, as, you know, the C B O C for a long time, we have two areas to be concerned about. First is being able to, to transfer all the data from the current site on the old site or the, the new site too. But one of the problems on that, you got a lot of bad information on there, a lot of draft minutes, for instance. You know, it's not that they weren't finalized, it's just that things are done to, to post the final ones first on there. But it also misses a lot of other information, and Sinestic had been attempting to ask me if I can go back to search through that file. She only asked for about five hundred items, and we just spoke a couple hours ago on that, and then doing it, they got kind of down, but uh, fill some of the points. But then the second one is the maintenance side. It means that we can't say, well, uh, we don't need to, update it for another five or six years. So it needs to be done every single month. And when you, you've got a new agenda packet, you've got a new set of minutes that have been finalized, you've got an annual report, hit them posted on there. So then when people do go on their website, they can find people who can easily access it. Because people get frustrated very easily when they go on the website and can't find anything. First right now. Sorry. I was going to shout out there. Right, that's the problem we've got, with almost all the pages on that website. It's a transition page. Our page, we go there on C S page four or four, and it doesn't exist anymore. It'd be frustrating. You're only going to look at ten or fifteen sites, and then they say, whatever, I'm making more. But then that will be changing, we know that. It's just, it's still frustrating.
Marie Anya, um, I want to say the new website, the Bell app, which was, um, it looked very nice. And thank you. That will make it more clear, and I'm trying to look for information. Um, I just request that maybe there can be a page where it shows here are your board members, because you guys work very hard. And I appreciate what you guys have, your name, I don't know what contact email you have, and issue point. Um, yeah, just to make sure that's up there so that people can contact you, because, um, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Are there any final comments on that?
Thank you. Uh, first, I appreciate the work that's being done now. I'm excited looking at the center four to fit. Um, one thing for the wishlist long term, I would love to see videos, short videos, uh, this is what the C B O C is, speaking from our chair, our community members, uh, why do you do this work? Right, painful long hours, why is it important? Uh, also the history of the C B O C, I think we could do the short videos that explain the, you know, you know, the community. Mostly ninety-nine percent of people, I believe, are not going to go and read a report, right, or will click to the links of, um, you know, all these wonderful things that we get, but they'll look at a quick video. Um, so I'd love to see that in the future. Um, but thank you, Sinestic, Sinestic. Um, and if maybe you could go to the C B O C's December meeting potentially to get a email, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Um, some of the things that I want to reiterate, because already you said, I think you do need to have a landing spot for your membership. Who are the members now? How do you become a member? Those type of, uh, key, key, key informational points. Also, if you go to the, uh, L C A P E's, they play a video about what is L C A P in the very beginning of all their meetings. It's a Schoolhouse Rock type of video. It just tells you what it is, where the funding comes from, what is it supposed to do, what does it look like? Eight grounds everybody. So if you had some, uh, a Schoolhouse Rock type of video that's just on page four that you played in the beginning of your meetings, so your meetings are recorded, just to give a quick grounding, uh, framing that you need to know about what you're getting ready to listen to, or what you're getting ready to, uh, be a part of. The other two things I'm sure that are on there is what you do and then what you have done. This is where the money, this is the money you have, this is where the money is when, this is the projects that have been done because of the bond money. All of those simple things are helping to educate and to navigate, and that's the key to all of our organizations inside the bigger organization, how do you educate and navigate somewhere through it.
Uh, this is all interesting, and I think that is, I think, speaking for myself, and probably most of the board here, I think we agree. Um, but I want to remind you, um, it's not our money. We're actually just volunteers overseeing that the district is, is being prudent and spending district money. Um, and to my knowledge, we don't have any fixed staff, and I don't think we have budgets to do these kinds of things. So if we're talking about making nice videos and things like that, I think we'd be into, um, you know, it's got to come from, from the district. And that's, you guys have to have it off that side, so.
Yeah, and just follow that, right? Uh, if we can, if we can have support, you know, we can produce content and send it over and then putting it together and editing could be, you know, we can be in the middle and, and, and in that respect, pretty easy for us to report ourselves doing something or doing a site visit or whatever. Uh, but the whole editing and making it smooth, I think that if we could get support in that, that'd be great.
Okay, anything else on Sinestic? We'll begin to close and move now to E four, discussion upon financial reports. Ms. Pan is going to take the side of. This is not about how to read the reports or making out the senior reports. This is strictly about the production of the reports. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Pan.
Thank you. We have a presentation that's going to come up in a second, and I'll just name a couple of the resources that we have available to you tonight. Um, we do have a copy of this presentation as well as the full suite of financial reports for our previous month. And we also have the full suite of the fiscal year reports for the fiscal year that has closed, which is fiscal year twenty-five, which goes from July first of twenty twenty-four through January of twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. So there's a couple of different, uh, financial reports that we provide, and we provide them essentially two ways. So one of the ways that we provide them is through an online reporting portal using Holby software and a system called Accountability. And then there's also a suite of reports that we do more manually, um, in our office. And so this kind of highlights some of the different components from our P M P that talks about our financial reports. Next slide. I'm going to move a little bit quickly through the slides. So this is not about, um, reading the reports that I imagine we might have brought our audience tonight. So we've provided some information about the terminology. Next slide. And here's the suite of reports that we provide. So the first one that you see, the consolidated budget status reports, those are all available on our online recording module, which is linked there on the left-hand side. At any point, any member of the community can log on to that module and review program and project reports at any time. The reports that you see below that, so the, the consolidated budget status are prepared by staff. Next slide. And so this is just the detail of the different reports that are provided, and we're going to kind of just zoom through the next step of slide, which will give you a snapshot of each one. So this is a report that comes out of Accountability, which is a software that we use to do multi-year, um, budget projections. Our financial reports go all the way back to fiscal year two thousand. Next slide. This is a subsection of that report. So if you wanted to just look at the master plan, next slide. This is a subsection of measure bar, so everything that we track is tracked separately by bond measure. Next slide. The next one, the bond program spending to date by site. This is an annual report on slide nine that is created in-house. And it encapsulates the full bond program, um, essentially on a sheet of paper. So it rolls all of the financial reports up to a site level. Next slide. This is the multi-year cash flow. So report thirteen identifies the overall program all the way to June of twenty twenty-nine. And the notes among the right five are referenced with additional income within. This is also a report that says manually within our office, sign five. This is the variance report. Because our reports reflect so many fiscal years at this point, almost three decades, um, in historical information and projection forward, we provide a monthly variance. The statistics just changed, so it's happened from month to month. Next slide. This is our A P checklist, and so this is the exact detail of every bond dollar that is spent. Um, one of the key objectives of the bond oversight committee is to review the expenditures of the bond program, and so this identifies how every single dollar is spent. Next slide. And then these are still more reports, but these are the ones that have been recently provided that represent the entire fiscal year and encapsulate all of the different approvals by the board. So kind of accelerating to the end, there are some additional staff reports that are provided, um, the newsletters and the project status reports. And, um, thanks to some great recommendations from friends of yours and yours, there is some additional, um, socials that are posted as well. And now we'll open it up for questions and comment.
Thank you. So the C U S, are you getting the reports on land on a radio basis when you need them?
So at least that's tried to provide them monthly, and we don't get them monthly. Um, so, you know, that's one issue. I think we should, as a, as a committee, talk about what's, uh, what we need, and I don't, I'm not sure that we need it monthly. Um, and especially as we think about the context of staffing and inverted on staff. I will say, I served on the C U S in Oakland, um, uh, for three years prior to joining, uh, the Facilities Department in, for Oakland Unified. I will say, I served on the CDOC in Oakland, um, uh, for three years prior to joining, uh, the facilities department in, for Oakland Unified. And, uh, I, my colleague, saw my colleague who was putting reports together in the CDOC, and it took her forty straight hours. Um, and that, you know, not to say anything about the tools or software that she had access to, but I do think, I don't know what it looks like on our, on our side here, but I do think it's, uh, labor intensive. We gotta make sure that, um, that the, the effort is matched with the need. And, and that's something, a discussion we can have.
Yeah, I understand that. I think it has been a problem. My Jenny's been a problem for quite some time. Um, and oftentimes we either don't get the boards, or don't get them timed, or don't get them in a complete manner. But, but, you know, again, I think it's not the lack of effort or the part of staff, what they, we try to get them to us. And I'm not entirely sure what the issue is, whatever it is, but it has been an ongoing problem without it.
Um, Ms. Pena, I was wondering, maybe you have some thoughts on, on the issue. Uh, that would be interesting. I don't even know your other staff, but I was wondering if you could respond to that, so we can all hear. But one, two things. One, what's going on in the department, but also what do you need from the board and the district in general to be able to support instead of the CDOC?
Thank you for that. Um, so when we last met at the joint board and CDOC, we did talk about this topic. And so one of the things that we did was we brought in a retired resource that helped us um, really kind of shore up the process, the training and the procedures for the financial reports. Um, once we spend, we've been able to produce them with a better cadence. One of the ways that the CDOC has really partnered with us is the CDOC meeting was essentially the second Monday. And part of our process in producing these financial reports is doing a full reconciliation. We want to make sure that everything is perfect, but we can't run final reports until the end of the. And so I would say the reconciliation process takes about two days. That's something we would do whether we run the reports or not. That's how we ensure that the reports are accurate. Um, once the full reconciliation has been made, any variance has been identified and resolved, then we can go into running the reports. So actually doing the manual reports doesn't take a lot of time. It's the reconciliation that takes a couple of days, and we would do that anyway. One of the other things that we've done is we've partnered with Accountability to find different components that could be automated. So while, um, financial data is really critical and we don't want to script pulling in data, we know that if we run a check, that's pretty clear. And so, um, we're working on the automation of bringing the warrant information into the accountability system from units, which is our district financial software enterprise system, so that that's one less manual step. Um, the other thing that's happened is we truly have a dedicated team member who's focusing on this at this time. Um, he was here earlier tonight. I wanted to embarrass him a little bit and shout out to him. Um, Superintendent Cotton was his principal at one point, and he has joined our team, and this has really become a focus. So I think to your point, having a dedicated staff member who is trained and able and focused on it, we know what he's doing that first week of every month has really enabled the reports to happen. He's all the one who authored all of the fiscal year reports. So I think the challenge for us becomes something that has always been, when it works, it works. And you have a cadence that is on time, and if you have a change in staffing, how do we replicate the process so that if a person changes, we don't lose that frequency? Um, but since our last meeting, we have been able to produce the full suite of reports for every month, and we've provided the fiscal year reports going back three years. So we've now caught ourselves up. And I just want to shout out to Alonso and appreciate him for his great work and dedication to these reports.
Um, yeah, I was, I think at the last CDOC meeting, you said that it took forty minutes to produce the reports. Is that still true? Was it taking forty minutes?
No, actually, now we've got it down to two days. So, um, that's about fifteen hours for us, but that's not including the reconciliation. So, um, before the reconciliation happened and then the preparation of the reports, the revisions of the reports to make sure that they were accurate and complete did take about a week. Um, now the reconciliation is about three days, running the reports about two days. And as they have come to me, there have been very little revisions needed, which is really set up the process. And also in partnership with the CDOC, um, we changed the date. So instead of being the second Monday, it's the third Monday, which allowed us to complete the reports and make sure that they were in the packet for posting. So we appreciate that partnership and that extra week, because sometimes the first day of the month falls on Friday, and then it's virtually impossible, um, depending on how it goes to happen, right, in the old model.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. Um, I heard that you said that you all were looking for the areas where we can, um, um, make certain parts of the reports that are being viewed up front to. Have you identified those areas and you have that automation started now with, with the new support that you have?
So one of the other transitions that we made, I have one question, is last year, last fiscal year, um, we had a consultant that was assisting in some of the data entry and production of the financial reports. And we've now pushed that in-house. So we have a team member that's doing that work. Um, and so in that transition, um, of kind of moving towards having an in-house person do it, um, the consultant essentially hasn't been involved. Um, we wanted to make sure that we had fully kind of onboarded and moved forward with in-person staff doing it, in-house district staff doing it, which we completed. The consultant has provided a script, um, that essentially will take that actuals, which will be the warrants list, and then import that directly into the system. We haven't done that trial run yet, but it's available.
And I just have a quick question about the, uh, the accounting support you get. And, you know, I don't know how much if you have a CPA or an auditor that you're interested in some, well, just isn't being on that. Well, did they, how would they interact with us at all, is there something to pay up?
It's an excellent question, and spoiler, it's the next topic.
Okay, we'll go to, uh, other comments?
Thank you very much. You know, or the, the same about being the old guy in the room. I'm sorry, I can tell you that over the decades, the CDOC has worked very closely with staff to try to do that sort of down the number of reports that has for each month. I mean, a lot more than the five that has for where I have. There's these suite of reports that they feel that have held over the years where necessary, you will get the information they need to properly oversee, uh, the bond program. And one of the problems is that things change very rapidly, and so, you know, changing the meetings every other month, getting the reports every once in a while or something like that. A lot can happen in a short period of time, and because we're always getting information that is at least a week, two weeks, three weeks length. And then at the end of the month, we don't get it until the, the, the third Monday. And so what we do, and it's, then it's another, um, two or three weeks before the CDOC chair moves towards the board about that. It's all done needle by then. So it's, it is important to, to figure out what they actually need. And that's why it's important that we look back on the past, what did they, how did we get to this point? Uh, I can fully appreciate what Melissa and her staff have been going through. If I can work with her as much as possible when I'm a CDOC chair, I know what she was going through. And I, I come from a house of labor, we, the, the bell rings at the end of the day and go home. Okay, you stop, your day's done, job, and you put on family shoes, okay? I couldn't stop her. At ten forty-five at night, she'd be sending me reports. And she's doing a great job, but there's always so much that you can do with the limited manpower that you have. And with no disrespect to staff or the board, CDOC is supposed to be an independent body, okay? They need to decide what they need to be properly overseen and not be given the direction, uh, or have a soft heart saying, well, you know, the board is not providing, uh, the facilities teams enough manpower to get the job done. That doesn't cut it. It's, it's up to the district, one way or the other, to find, uh, the manpower to make the job done.
Um, Marie, I am. I just wanted to say, um, I really enjoyed reading the project report emails that come out. I know some came out this morning. Um, they're very clear reading. I can understand it as a parent, man. Um, that was, I see your name on there. We said so much. Uh, yes, so I feel really updated in knowing what projects are going on. There's even pictures, some sketches included, and a little timeline. I really appreciate the clarity and being, um, open to letting us as parents and educators know what, where our money is going, what the projects are, and what the status is. Thank you.
Sometimes there are videos in those newsletters.
Any final comments? I have one of the, I sent it up for so that I just, I think it was, I have a request that you take each report and critically examine it and figure out if you need it, maybe do it, maybe a dollar. Times have changed since the suite of financial proposals, uh, invented, and maybe things are not valid anymore. Maybe you need something else. And so one thing I would like to say is just, you know, what does this do? Why would we review it? Do we need it, um, to help, uh, help with the, the managers of the reports? Thank you.
Yes, we would certainly do that. Um, when I think about, um, you know, at the end of the day, what I think our community members, uh, want to know is how much money has the district spent on my school? Uh, and so thinking about putting ourselves in, in their shoes, um, and giving them the information so they can ask you guys the tough questions about how resources are prioritized. I think that is what should, um, be part of this validation process, if you think about the information, what we're doing, and how we're translating in for a community, um, engagement benefit.
Who knows? Okay, we'll go to E five, which is the session about the, of the twenty sixteen grants, if you have a well-being estimation, invitation, thirty twenty-one. We have just a few minutes, and, uh, those are.
Okay, terrific. So two resources for this. You do have a PowerPoint as well as a guide of recommendations. So it looks like this. So we're going to quickly run through this. Um, next slide. So to your great question, there are a number of audits that the bond program goes through. So there is the district-wide financial audit, uh, which is due in December, and the bond program is a fund of the district is included in that. And then by ED code, there are two bond programs, specific audits that are done. One is a financial audit, and the other is a performance audit. And I have some of the ED codes referenced there as slide at the end, um, of the full text. There are some supplemental audits that have also been done that we'll get into in just a second. I, you know, one of the questions that I've asked.
I'm sorry. I mean, you have very little time. Can you just jump to the AI and update us on that?
Sure. So we will go to, let's just continue to walk down the slide. So background on the AI implementation task force was created. Keep going. There was a task force created. Keep going. We're gonna kind of move along. Keep going. Those are the numbers to the committee. Part of the, um, there were a hundred and twelve recommendations that were made, and so of those recommendations, many of them were included in the program management. But next one. Okay, so, um, let's go ahead and jump to the handout that you have before you. So there's a resource that's been provided tonight, um, and there's an updated presentation. If I can, it can be found while we walk through this. This spreadsheet has a hundred and twelve recommendations on it. It identifies a brief description of the item. It identifies if the items included in the PMP, and then there's a status column for the contract factor. Many of the items have been implemented using the PMP. The last column is the third-party verification. The board has approved three different third-party verification and implementation audits. Phase one, phase two, and phase one point five. So phase one and phase two were completed. So in the third-party verification column, if it says implemented, partially implemented or not implemented, that is the status from phase one or phase two. If it says phase point one point five, it's because that item is seen and reviewed by the third-party auditor. When you look at the items, uh, the status identified, um, in the column for West Front of Fasta, and it identifies implemented, it'll let you know essentially how that item's been implemented. So in the presentation that was provided tonight on slide nine, it identifies categories of implementation. Some of the items, they're, um, belong to legal, and so the auditors' name knows is undetermined. There are a couple that are obsolete or completed. The reason why they're obsolete or completed is because these audit recommendations look back so many years, and so there are programs and positions that are no longer being used. And the audit specifically names adjusted job description for this position. Make sure somebody's trained in this program, and we're not using that program or have that position anymore. It's really an obsolete recommendation. It doesn't mean that you didn't do anything. It means what we did was we really tried to implement the intention of the recommendation. There's also a number of recommendations that call for the items to be audited. So a number of the recommendations kind of cascaded, and it said, do this, do this, do this. Now go and audit, make sure that those things have been done. A lot of the items that are identified as implemented and audited are reviewed in the annual audits that are done by third-party auditors. There's a couple of items that have been completed by the IT and HR team. And then there were two policy items in the recommendation. One of them is the CDOC policy, which has been adopted by the board. The other policy is the district business ethics policy, which is an item that Superintendent Cotton and I have discussed, and then that we would like to bring to governance to take another look. Um, and then there were also a number of items that had to do with governance, with, with things like training board work members. Um, of the seventy-six items included in the PMP, many of them have staffed implementation. Um, and so at this time, I will.
We are at eight oh six. Would you like to stand for MS eight forty? You have this. This, this, we're going to, this will be the, okay, thank you for the abbreviated presentation. What does it take to wrap this up for the vote and finish it and publicly say that we are done?
So my recommendation would be that a final, no more than four base report with this in this, an appendix, would be provided to the board. So my recommendation would be that a final, no more than four base report with this in the appendix would be provided to the board. There are a number of items that based on their nature are never going to be verified by a third-party auditor. But the spirit of the recommendation has been implemented by staff, and it is documented. And it's something that can be reviewed. I think part of the value of the audit itself wasn't just to say that a recommendation was made, did it, or done. The whole point of the program management plan and kind of the whole point of the change was let's learn from this, let's change, and even if the program stays, even if the program changes, the implementation of the recommendation is a loss. There are a couple of recommendations that are forward-looking. For example, there's one that says, if you have future ballot measures, this is one which to consider. So I think that in a concise report, we could identify what we've done to implement it, provide the categories kind of as they're referenced here, and as they're identified in that chart. And then make final recommendations, recommendations that were made that should be followed and keep an eye out for in the future, because you can really only implement them when you implement them. We'll say that every year in our annual bond performance and bond financial audit, the auditors use the PMP to verify that we're doing the work that we say that we do. And many of the forms and resources that we use have references of audit items. This is actually a printout of the PMP. It's three hundred pages. Every form that we use, every process that we follow, it's in here, and it's in here to ensure that no matter who's implementing it, we don't lose the internal controls that were intended by the audit.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you. So sounds like that's a good, well, thank you for asking that question, President Recker, and Ms. Payne, thank you for the response of, you know, providing a concise report on what was completed. On slide five, the implementation task force has a box for a CEOC member. I'm wondering what the current status of the implementation task force is, would it ever officially close out? Or can we maybe, can I suggest, you know, that this body does come together, close out in relation to this final report?
So I think that's a great recommendation of the numbers named there. I'm the last one standing. And we would have to modify the committees slightly, but I think we could also make that in the report as some of these positions no longer exist. But I do agree with the intent of the recommendation, which I think is that a report should be produced and it should be a draft. And it should be reviewed, and groups should really review it and have the opportunity to provide feedback. And I think the PMP was written side by side with the CEOC. So I'd be happy to produce the draft, and before it was made, finally create the opportunity to receive that feedback so that it can be a good record.
Any more questions? I'd love to have a comment.
That will be brief. Don't get off the agenda here. I think I listened to that presentation. It was informative. This goes back a few years. Unfortunately, the CEOC members who were around during that time, none of the workers who were around there at that time, she don't really know what was in that first investigation, don't go on and on. But more importantly, you have no idea what was not in that F A I, because they ran out of money before they talked to anybody that knew anything. Okay, I don't have a firsthand. I'm still waiting for my follow-up interview when it comes. That's why they found, well, nine years now, through interviewing, is for writing things about. Immediately I need to access social program. But it was the CEOC that discovered that there were forty items of those recommendations that were, that staff said were complete, were complete. And have all the additional audits to find out just how complete they were. So, but the comment is not for the board, that's, let's write the sweet things under the rug, is to CEOC. You need to be better informed about this. You need to be able to pay attention to what's, what is necessary on there before, to sprinkle holy water under our sink and spoon there. At one point, this was going to cost the district three point two million dollars. If that stopped before it got that far, and this was extremely disruptive, not just to our district, but the Wall Street Journal starts writing articles about us, and New York Times, that is not good. You have no idea how many state and federal agencies were knocking on our door. You do not want the FBI, the S C C, the I R S, the State Attorney General, the District Attorney, management knocking on your front door like they were online. You don't want that. So we want to be sure we do this thing that way. That's all my recommendation. Don't just sweep unbroken.
Any final comments, Ms. Payne? Okay, so I think there was a agenda setting for, let's see what this had about things like. Any other comments down there? All right, meeting, there's a C, I'm sure of it. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your work. Again, I think it's the hardest song to your job in the industry, but I know you guys committed for sure. We really appreciate what you do, and, and you guys have left a very
Oh, yeah, I just want to thank the board for trusting us this, our help. And I think Tom Goss, who put a lot of hours, time, passion, and knows more about the history of the bond program and CEOC than I think anyone can find, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and I certainly appreciate you, and I think it enables to resolve. Agreed.
Any other comments? We got one. Maria, I can call too close at eight thirty, I think you have, thank you everybody.